Now called the order and items from the public. Good morning, Sheriff. Come forward and state your name, please.
Michael Law, 53 Ocean Lane, President of Polycymic Theater. I just wanted to give you our report. Sent you all of the funding people for the marquee down at the Apollo. I signed the contract back in October of 2022. I've got a firm delivery date. It will be delivered to the Apollo on the 6th of, or 7th of January. With installation to go up that week. So I just wanted to let you all give me an update on that.
That's great news. Would you please let us know when you get ready to flip the switch?
Oh, yeah. We'll have a big, big celebration.
Yeah, good.
Flip the switch.
Yeah, I know it's been a long time coming and...
But I do appreciate, I do appreciate the funding that you all granted us and, and I mean, it really add a lot to the Apollo and to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Michael.
Any other items from the public? No, ma'am. If you've got something you wanna, you wanna bring before, now's the time.
Okay, so I'm, let me get my phone. All right. So I'm sure all y'all received an email last week from me.
I actually got it last night because you spelled my name wrong in the email. So it got forwarded from Gary to me, yes.
Thank you. Who are forwarded to him? Anyway, I need to know when I'm gonna have that meeting, when it's gonna be held. I got another letter giving you 14 days to respond. I didn't put a date on it the last time. Now... Constance Hyatt. Okay. So do y'all have anything to do with Day Report? Because the last time Tim was here from Day Report. So I was in Day Report. Tim kicked me out. They didn't give me any help. They didn't say anything. He just, I even got recordings of me having conversations. So I'm gonna bring a lawsuit towards Tim. I just want everybody to know that. I don't do anything behind anybody's back. We know that there, I have a marijuana card and we know that he can't discriminate against marijuana users. Entities and individuals are prohibited from discrimination against patients who are authorized to use medical care. Two, unprofessional conduct. Violating provision of the Medical Care Act can be deemed unprofessional conduct under West Virginia Medical Practice Act. Three, he failed to accommodate me when I asked him if I can come back and finish the parenting class because I was in a CPS case. He said, "No, you must come back clean." I said, "Sir, I don't do medicine. I had kidney failure." He was like, "That has nothing to do with the fact that you're this." I said, "But this is how I take care of myself." He was like, "I don't care. I'm not changing it for you." Da-da-da-da-da, which I got all on tape. I'm hoping that we all can work something out because I am gonna go forward on that one. Then the second issue, let me know when my time is up, please. The second issue that I'm bringing, well, I can just give it, your attorney's here. I'm gonna file it today. I wrote a letter to the commissioners about Tim's actions, violating my rights, discrimination. And there's rules and regulations and we must start following rules and regulations. Their Day Report is there to help us, not to hurt us. And I had to go and beg for other parenting classes. I had two weeks left. Never caused any issues there. I feel like I was helping people there because my mother of eight, I'm a grandmother of 13. Some people there was looking up to me. Matter of fact, my daughter was in the same class and nobody ever knew she was my daughter until she fell asleep and I said, "Wake up." And the lady says, "Is there a problem?" I said, "That's my daughter. She come here to learn." But I will not be mistreated by Day Report or CPS. Y'all are responsible for these people and y'all know they're doing things wrong, but nobody is stepping up. Tim, if I release this videotape, it's gonna make him look so bad, but I have not and I have a right to. I consent to myself to release it. But he acts like he owns it. He's supposed to be there. I had two weeks left. He wasn't even willing to work with me even though I had my medical card and the judge gave me permission to continue. But he throws me out, making me stressed, making me, putting me in a bind where I don't know if I'm gonna finish or if I can find another class. It's not right and I wish he was here. Because now everybody's gonna know there's rules. If you have a card, he can't throw you out. He has to help us. But that's not what he did to me. So that's that note. And with CPS, I need that meeting because I am sick and tired of them lying. I've never done drugs in my life. I've never even been drunk. But when she signed that paper that it was the truth, all of the statements, well, I'm letting you know, it was not the truth. And I need that meeting. There's too many people, kids getting taken just because somebody don't like somebody. I'm a good mother. They never gave me an opportunity just because I had two Caucasian kids. They trying to figure out how did I have 14 kids? Didn't get food stamps. I worked two jobs to take care of these kids when their mothers were on drugs. So something's gonna have to be done. He's gonna have to apologize to me or I'm going to sue. And I'm going to win because what's wrong with today is people don't know the law. But when somebody snatched your children and you pay $175,000 for a CPS case, three different lawyers, and nobody tells the truth. And I am not gonna walk away. Y'all might have took my daughter from me, but you will not take anything else. And I will fight until I go home to the Lord. And we're gonna make this right. So I need to know when am I gonna have that open meeting and when that investigation's gonna start because I am not gonna stop. I will show up every Thursday until something is done. You can't expect people to do things and you have DHR coming in and falsifying things. It's not right. Now I don't see my daughter. For what? Because they said I was a drug user? Because my son and daughter was on drugs? So they said their mother's on drugs? No, they're not gonna allow them to do this to me. So now that we know that I am going to sue Tim personally and not Day Report, but Tim because he made it hard for me. I had to plead. I had to find other people to help me. You don't know what it's like when somebody steps in your life and they allowing you constantly. Sherman Lambert, my lawyer, supposed to represent me, did nothing. Rydell, what did they do for me? A ghostwriter, $19,000. What did they do for me? They allowed this court system to rig whatever they wanted to take my family. And you know how many kids I had in CPS? 12. 12. And we're waiting for December the 18th for the last three to come home. All of y'all see y'all grandkids and kids, but I go home without my daughter every night and everybody say, "You got your grandkids back? It's a difference." They're my grandkids. They're not my daughter. But they took them for the wrong reasons. And I need to justify and I need to make this right because every day they're taking our children to make money. I can lose everything, but I'm not willing to lose my daughter for something I didn't, I didn't do. They never been abused. Never. But this is the consequence. So I need answers. And I need to know when y'all gonna hold this meeting because I'm not gonna stop until y'all do and I am entitled to this meeting. Things gotta be fixed in Martinsburg.
Ma'am, when you, excuse me, when you leave at, at our office, would you just please leave your name and your contact information there, please? Thank you. Any other items from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Sure move.
Properly moved. I need a second.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye's have it. Any items on a purchase or you have any questions about?
I, I do have one question.
Okay.
The postage. Is that yearly? Is that monthly? How often is that postage?
We just refill the machine. It's, it's when it's necessary that we buy it in bulk. We fill the machines and, well, it used to be three billings, now two billings. So it's a bulk account.
Yeah, I saw, I saw it was for two.
There's no...
I was just curious. Depends on the season.
So if it's billing season for any of the internal offices, it's usually a lot up. So, I mean, we spend $75,000 a year, Tracy? Yeah.
Right. Every, every time you get a stamp, it deducts from it. Yeah, I kinda got that. I just wondered how often we have to refill that. That's all.
All right. We do have two internal budget revisions. Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir. The first one is from, from Sheriff Blair for the tax off account, which is 404, asking permission to, to decrease the salary line item 103 by $1,000 and increase overtime by 1,000. And the second is from Mr. Hess, an account 406, to move $1,605 from contribution to others into his permanent line item.
We do have a change of status. New hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Paul Anderson as a Deputy Court Marshal effective December the 16th, 2024 with an annual salary of $39,017.
Is that the two and the one?
This is, yes. Yeah, that's, that's where we eliminated two part-time positions.
Yeah, and this is the one full-time.
Change of status received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief for Justin Murphy, firefighter, firefighter three, to move from a 42-hour work week to a 56-hour schedule effective January 1, 2025 with an annual salary change from 61,440 to 66,220. Change of status received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief for Joshua Smith, part-time firefighter, to move to full-time firefighter two, effective January 1, 2025 with a salary change from $17.83 per hour to $56,005 annually. Change of status received from Tim Zia, Community Corrections Director for Dan Johnson, part-time DRC driver, to move to full-time DRC driver effective January 2nd, 2025 with a salary change from $17.83 per hour to $36,615 annually. Letter of resignation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Anthony Renneken effective December the 19th, 2024. Letter resignation received from Katie Wilkes, Delegating Prosecuting Attorney for Jamie Nails effective January 1, 2025. And of course, as everybody knows, we recessed out of this meeting last week and went back into session with a multi-county legislative session. I do need approval of the minutes. That's all right. Everybody was here, so we're, we're okay with that. An acceptance of the 2024 BGA grant, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance. It's a JAG grant. That's in your pocket as well. So I do need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sure move.
Thank you.
And properly move. And second, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye's have it. Mr. Hess, you're up, sir. Excuse me one minute, Mr. Hess, before we get on. That, that Department of Justice grant was for radios for the Sheriff's Department, just so everybody is aware. Thank you.
Yeah. I just got a couple of exonerations this morning to bring to you. First one I have is a taxpayer error for a Jesse Kane. He, he reported his vehicles in two different counties, Berkeley and I think it was either Jefferson or Morgan, but it was a taxpayer error in amount of $51.92. So I had to bring that to you for your approval.
Okay, you've heard the assessor on a request for the exoneration. I need a motion?
Second.
Properly moved. And second, any further questions? All in favor, say aye. Are those opposed?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The only other thing, we do have a couple of office errors, personal property exonerations. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them for the reasons that's listed there. Most of them were double billed, but the total amount for all those seven would be $2,537.46.
Okay, that, as presented by the assessor for the seven personal tax exonerations in the amount of $2,537.46, need a motion to approve?
Sure move.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye's have it. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Boarding meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
I had a couple of board meetings this past week. Of course, we started with the legislative summit last Thursday. I thought that went well. It was good to have all three counties, I think, in the room. Changed from the previous two I attended and I, I, I thought the discussion was good. And that night I had a museum board meeting back in the same room a couple of hours later. Museum board is still chugging along, still looking for a location. You know, there've been the discussion. We've had a couple of meetings back and forth between Roundhouse and the museum board about possibly locating the museum down there. There's been a little hesitation from the Roundhouse board. And they spoke to that in the meeting because of the focus of where it was and what would be needed to, to put the museum in that building, per se. I don't think, I'll get, I guess I'll move forward to that in the Roundhouse board meeting, which was last night. But, so with that, and then there, there's a lot of artifacts coming forward and people have things and they're just getting a little antsy of where and when and if the museum's gonna be there and, you know. But on and on, that board meeting went, went pretty well. They're optimistic or were at that point that the Roundhouse would agree to the Bridge and Machine Shop. But moving forward, we had the Roundhouse meeting last night and there's not a consensus there on the board to use that building due to like the bathrooms being outside, people having to go in and out of that building from the museum to use bathrooms, the having the darkened of the building and some other things, window blockage and that to make it museum-ready. But the Roundhouse has, and there's ideas tossed around about finding the funds and doing fundraisers or whatever needs to be done, grants to possibly rebuild the East Roundhouse and make that a state-of-the-art museum. And CSX, we've been told, may be interested in helping with that. So we're gonna help them and we're gonna push forward and try to find ways to make that a reality. And, you know, we did do conceptual drawings for that to make it a, an amphitheater. We're not pushing that aside. We would actually still push to do an amphitheater there, but on the further east lawn beyond the fence towards Burke Street is where we would propose to, in the future sometime, possibly if we were still gonna do an amphitheater. But right now the push is to try to find funds and rebuild the East Roundhouse and make it a state-of-the-art museum.
Pretty, pretty ambitious plan.
Big bite there.
It is.
Twenty-five million dollar bite.
Yes, it is.
But if you don't, you don't talk about it, you know, these things need to be vetted.
You gotta start somewhere.
It's still in talks, but you know, we've been, we've been getting money and receiving money for the Roundhouse from legislation in different places to do the, the farmer's market and the indoor market. And in the 2005 study, the Roundhouse says that that Bridge and Machine Shop is the hub and cog in the wheel to make money for that facility. And we believe that as far as we've gone in the money we've had granted and donated to make that a market, we should be able to get $45 or $50 a square foot out of that building in the downstairs year-round daily market. And that would be the money we need to be self-sustainable there. And it, and we're pretty close to being there. We have the $750,000 that just came from the, the federal, federal money from Capito and Manchin. So we're gonna start finishing that building off. We're working with Region Nine on that. Do the outdoor market in the wash shop, indoor market in the downstairs there, get the concrete done, get the doors done for the downstairs and get into business. We have applied for next year's grant as well and we're still in the hunt for the $750 again for the 2025 budget, federal budget. That money would be used for stormwater, road, paving, parking, and those sort of things to finish that facility. That's, oh, and then there's a new night market that's gonna start this next summer. It'll be once a month. Try to catch commuters getting off the train on Fridays and then maybe move to Saturdays in the fall. It'll be more like a, a live music, social gathering, some market people and things going on down there at the Roundhouse through the, through the summer and into the fall in, in coordinates along with the regular farmer's market that exists. And right now the Merry Makers Market's going on through the weekend of Christmas. If you haven't had a chance, it's been very busy. A lot of, a lot of vendors down there going well, so.
Hope to get there. Haven't been there yet.
Yep.
That's it, sir.
That's all I got.
Mr. Barnhart?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I had a local government advisory committee last Friday and my last meeting. And the highlight, as far as I was concerned, there was a federal update, which was an overview of recent federal appropriations for the Chesapeake Bay Water Show. It was given by Peter Marks of the Federal Affairs Contractor Clean Water Coalition. And he gave a summary of state of federal appropriations and change in Congress members and that kind of stuff. And, you know, kinda tied it in with the Republican victories. That was, I mean, this guy had, knew his stuff as far as federal appointees and all that kind of stuff. Very interesting. And of course, I had to give a report on the great state of West Virginia and informed them of our recent change in the legislature, you know, losing Craig Blair, gaining Patrick Morrissey. I said, "He's from Harpers Ferry, so that bodes well for the Chesapeake Bay from West Virginia Governors Association where it's not a coal baron from southern West Virginia, you know. It's somewhere from the eastern panhandle." So that hopefully will bode us well in, in that respect. And that was the local government advisory committee. And then yes, Monday, I had the Region Nine Planning Council, my last meeting. And they did a lot of discussion. Had the Bethany House was there reviewing what the Bethany House did and their local problems, not getting a grant from state. And then they had the various staff members give a report and that was pretty much standard reporting and that was the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think a lot of people realize how close the Bethany House was to closing with...
Yeah. Well, they're, they're on the edge now.
And I don't, I don't think people realize too how, what a problem we have here in Berkeley County to house homeless women.
Yep.
The men can go to the rescue mission.
Women and kids.
Women don't have a place to go. And we get calls every now and then here for help and it's, it's not good. And if we ever have a chance to make it better, then we should do anything we can to try to make it better. No problem. And thank goodness we'll at least have the Bethany House because...
There was a chance there for 28 women and 10 children to be placed on the street. So I want to thank our state delegates and senators for helping with that. That's all. All right, Mr. Kelly?
Well, I didn't have any board meetings, but I, I truly thought our legislative summit last Thursday went well as, as HD said. I thought they listened. I thought there was some good feedback. It was good to have John's participation. He's, you know, obviously six years down there and has lived that situation. And there seems to be some good vibes coming out of Charleston about our legislative summit. And, you know, Randy Smith is obviously now the new president-elect for the Senate. He's from Tucker County. He has been supporting for several years, trying to get something passed to help Tucker... for several years, trying to get something passed to help Tucker County with their situation. So I think that will hopefully work in our favor. And so hopefully, you know, we can keep the momentum going and look forward to a good session in February, so. And this past Monday and Tuesday, I had the pleasure, along with Commissioner Gokenhour, of attending the Eastern West Virginia Safety Summit. It was held over at Bethel Church here in Berkeley County. It's the first time that this summit has ever been held in the state of West Virginia. The lady that is responsible for this is named Michelle Gay. She was a mother of one of the nineteen-six-year-olds that was shot and killed in Sandy Hook, Connecticut in 2012. And there were some dynamic discussions and presenters, and there was a good representation of the community there, but also a good representation of people from outside of their community, even outside of our state that attended. And it was, it was a real plus for Berkeley County, I thought, by hosting this. I want to do a huge shout-out to our grants administrator, Elizabeth Lapchak, for helping to secure, obviously, the funding to put this on. And the highlight for me was getting to meet. We attended a dinner on Monday night and sat next to a guy named Frank DeAngelis, and he was the principal of Columbine High School in Colorado in 1999 when the shooting occurred there. And, of course, that was the first big shooting massacre in our country in 99. And then he was the last presenter on Tuesday afternoon for the summit. And you talk about a dynamic person who lived that and now has committed his entire life to attending summits like this to try to help people prevent this from happening at their schools. And it was just, I thought it was a real plus for our community, so.
It was, it was without a doubt one of the best seminars I have attended in many, many years. Just high-quality people came here to help us, came into our community to help us. They had a panel that they put together. One was an FBI agent, one was a CIA agent, and the other was the Department of Homeland Security. Another gentleman was a Green Beret, and another panelist was a doctor of psychology. So just, just a top-notch group of people. Elizabeth did a tremendous job in putting this grant together to get it awarded to, to us, along with Sean and Randy.
How well-attended was it?
It was, it was pretty well. Not as well as it should have been, quite honestly.
They had a hundred and seventy people register, but I would say each day it was around a hundred or so that attended, and some came one day and not the other, but...
How big of an area did they come from?
Well, we had them from...
Pennsylvania?
Pennsylvania, Virginia, different states.
Merrill County?
Yep.
Oh, my.
The speakers flew in here from all over the country. One presenter was from Vancouver, British Columbia.
Oh, really?
So it was very impressive.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
As everybody's already mentioned, the legislative seminar, I think, was very positive. I think that when we can come together as an Eastern Panhandle, it helps make us stronger. We basically all have the same problem, just some are a little bit larger than others. But that's the room where you get the ideas moving and trying to get things solved. I was also on a Zoom call this week with Development Authority and UNICAP, along with Gary, to establish the values with the CMC project, so that it can determine what kind of TIF funds will be generated off of that, so we can move forward on different projects that we look to be able to fund. There were some calculations there that were not, were not accurate, and unfortunately, we'll have to go back and do a little bit more work. It was basically on the square footage of the buildings that was presented. The Health Department construction is, is on schedule. The roof and shingles are on. The doors will be set in the next two weeks. In the meantime, there'll be rough ends with the plumbing and electrical and HVAC. The jail building is a little bit behind schedule because they're waiting on some of the materials to be able to move forward with that. But the contractor's doing his best to accommodate our needs, and we're doing our best to accommodate the court's needs. Everybody's working to try and get this accomplished. I did have a Development Authority meeting this week where there was an independent audit done by A.A.N.L. out of Virginia, Vienna, Virginia. It proves that our financials are strong within the Development Authority, and there are still many projects that are moving forward. Many of them are still doing their due diligence. I was on a Zoom call this morning with Jennifer Smith with the Development Authority and John Stump, who represents Steptoe and Johnson, on with, to try and have a local developer to see if he would qualify for TIF funds for his project as well. Last Friday, last Friday, I attended a funeral for our firefighter Lieutenant Jeremy Taylor. And it was without a doubt a hero's send-off, as it should have been. Jeremy was a very integral part in our operation here. He did a lot of training, not just for our department, but throughout the entire region. He is a true public servant who served as a deputy sheriff in Merrill County. He served as a two-term sheriff in Merrill County. And then when he was terming out, he wanted to be a part of Berkeley County Fire. And we knew from the very first time that he was on the fire ground that he was going to be a part of us. He is a man among men. He is without a doubt that perfect public servant that you would ever dream of when you're a child and you want to be somebody like Jeremy Taylor. So certainly want to pay our respects to him. I will commend the chief and the members of Berkeley County Fire for their work in helping him with his transportation costs and any other expenses he had. They did multiple fundraisers to generate to his family. They would by his bedside many, many times. They worked his shifts so he could continue to take care of his family. That's what the brotherhood is about. So I want to, the people in this county lost, lost a true public servant. I think it's important that they know that. And if you pray, I would ask that you keep his wife Jenny in your prayers. If you're not, I would ask you maybe, maybe give him a prayer. So I just, I just wanted to pass that on. So thanks. Thanks for everybody that helped him through this process. Okay, Mr. Kellerman, would you please take care of our honorary commissioner, Javen Roberts?
A privilege.
Face up. I had it right then. So you're going to repeat after this, okay? Raise your right hand. Javen Roberts, do swear?
Do swear. I will uphold the Constitution and I will uphold the Constitution of the state of West Virginia. I will work hard, that I will work hard to fulfill the responsibilities, Office of Honorary Commissioners, honorary, which I have been appointed, I have been appointed by God.
And now we just want you to tell us a little bit about yourself and, and listen to what you're doing and what's your future.
Right now?
Yeah.
I'm Javen Roberts, go to Faith Christian Academy. My plans for the future currently are go to WVU, study mechanical engineering.
It's a pleasure to have you here today. If you have any questions while we're, feel free to speak up. Just raise your hand or something. Commissioner Gokenhour will recognize you if you have any comments, but feel free to make some. It's good to have you here.
Thank you.
What, you're going to West Virginia?
Yeah.
What do you think of the new football coach, Rich Roddick?
Well said, Javen.
North Carolina got Belichick, and we got Rodriguez.
Next up, Chad Weinberg, our Deputy County Administrator, MOU with WVU Medicine.
Well, you want to address vacancies in case there are any? I don't know if there are...
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here. Tim Saya cannot make it due to scheduling conflict. He's traveling. So this MOU that's in front of you today for approval, this is an effort that started with Commissioner Gokenhour. Staff at WVU had reached out to him with a problem. He then turned and asked Tim Saya to attempt to find a solution, which we have. Basically, what's going on at the ER is community members that are struggling with addiction are presenting themselves to the ER. ER staff is then able to place them at treatment centers all throughout the country, but the West Virginia Medicaid transportation provider can be very, very unreliable. Tim and anybody else that works in recovery will tell you there's a small window of time that you have to capture these folks and get them to a facility to be able to encourage their success. The staff at the ER and the hospital are seeing wait times of upwards of 12 hours where these folks are checking out, then against medical advice, they're not getting transported to these facilities, unfortunately continuing the cycle of addiction. So the hospital had reached out to see if the Day Report Center could assist in any of these transportations. Tim worked with the staff to develop an MOU. Basically, the MOU states that we are willing to help them with these transportations. If the DRC has staff available, if they're not committed, and it doesn't interfere with the DRC's ability to move their, their enrollees around, then we would be able to provide these services as needed to the hospital.
Transportation to where?
Transportation to anywhere. It could be anywhere in the state.
Recovery center.
Recovery centers.
Just, just in West Virginia?
Yes. Yeah, these are, so, these would be primarily West Virginia Medicaid patients that have to be placed in an in-state treatment center to be covered by that service.
And how would the Day Report Center be reimbursed or whatever?
They would not. This would be, this would be a service provided by your Day Report Center and the funds that it has to support the problem that exists in the community. We're, we will become another option for them. We're not the sole option. That's correct.
Just another in line to get on where they need to go.
And as, as you know, the work that Angie has done for many, many years in trying to help get folks healthy, she had reached out that they've got, you know, she becomes very passionate, and I love, I love the passion, but also, it's like, she gets very frustrated as well because they've had people who are willing to go get help.
You know Angie.
I do. And I'm glad, I'm glad I do. But they, they've had situations where people have finally agreed to go get help, and then they sit there and they wait for, for up to 24 to 72 hours. And that's, by that time, they forget it, nobody wants to help me, so they walk out. So if we have an opportunity to be a part of that solution, we're not the final solution, but a part of it, I think it's to everybody's benefit.
We've got to figure out a way to, it was talked about last Thursday with the sheriff, of getting, be able to take people to Hagerstown or Winchester that have facilities, but not all the way to Huntington, West Virginia, for crying out loud.
Agreed.
And we've got to work on that somehow, Chad, if you get time to just figure out. And I'm sure it's going to be a legislative thing.
Yes, sir.
And that's where it starts, obviously, so. But we need to make that, once we get the sales tax ability, and we can make that a priority in our legislative...
We have been in conversations with the hospital. They are just as excited to see that change in the horizon.
Yeah, so for purposes of this request, so there isn't any confusion. This is, this is relative to drug transport for an addiction. We aren't transporting anybody else. This is just, if it's going to an addiction, relative effort, support effort. Any further questions? Okay, we're going to need a motion for the approval of the MOU and to be able to give the president the authority to sign the document. I would make a motion to do that, sir.
I'll say it.
Is it properly moved and seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Chad. Next up, Mr. Barney. Sorry we're a little bit late. Here to represent the Solid Waste Authority. Welcome, sir.
You've got a lot of special students to get back to, so we want to make sure that...
A 10:43 start of a lunch shift, and I prepped, if I'm not there, can you do this? If I'm not there, can you do that? So I usually run the machine at lunch so I can familiarize myself with kids' names. I like to know kids' names. Side note, the safety, the safety summit you guys referenced, our county was encouraged, county school system was encouraged to send one representative from each school. I'd like to let you know that South Middle School had four people there, including our safety officer, Dean Olak. And I got the feedback. The feedback that you gave was the feedback I heard from our assistant principal who went. It was an amazing event. Also happy to let you guys know, in the, in the spirit of safety, South Middle School raised money last year, and we are going to be installing night locks on every classroom door, and that's going to be done next week. So took about $8,000, got some help from the state. So something to create a safer environment for kids and staff at South Middle School, so I'm proud to answer that. That's not why I'm here, though.
Congratulations, sir.
I'm Mark Barney, principal of South Middle School. That's a side note. I am also the vice chairman of the Berkeley County Solid Waste Authority. I've worked closely with Clint Hogman since 2013, so I've been on that.
And mentioning you're a graduate of Hedgesville High School.
We can throw that in there, too. So I've been with Clint for, since 2013, and let's keep it in the Hedgesville realm. In late October, I got a, I got a phone call one afternoon. Someone called me and said, hey, Mark, I want to let you know that your baseball coach and your former colleague has passed today, Coach America, a Hedgesville, a Hedgesville legend. About two hours later, I was at baseball practice with my son, I got a call from Clint, same day. And Clint said, Mark, I've got two things I need to talk to you about. One is the insorga conversation that we've been having, and second one is personal. So he took me through, in about 10 minutes, the insorga piece, and then he took me through his situation. So Clint has been diagnosed with a brain tumor. He's the chairman, the volunteer chairman, volunteer program manager, and the chairman of the Solid Waste Authority. So he shared this news with me in October. Since then, I've been doing my best to fulfill his role with the help of Lynn Lashley, who runs the office. So that has been, that has been since October. So on that day, I got that news about Coach America. I got this news from Clint. It's important to me, and it's important to Clint. We talked last night. He said, good luck tomorrow. Talking to the county commission. I think it's important that they know that I'm still active in this. And he's telling people I'm the chairman, and I'm telling people he's the chairman. Clint Hogman is the chairman of the Solid Waste Authority. I'm the vice chairman of the Solid Waste Authority, and we're going to keep it that way as long as we possibly can. He's coming to board meetings via Zoom because he can't be exposed. He's, he's a high risk for COVID. But he's been coming to board meetings, and he's been advising me at an extremely high level, probably to the point where, I know to the point for me, I feel a little guilty reaching out to him because I know what he's going through. But if something comes up and I have a question, and I need guidance and so on, I tend to reach out to him. We, our text daily are 10 to 20 at least every day. So with that in mind, I'm coming to you today asking for an emergency budget request of $84,125 to get us some help. Clint's, the dynamic with Clint was very unique with the Solid Waste Authority. He was the chairman of the board. He also was the volunteer program manager. So the day-to-day, he had, he had help in the office with Lynn Lashley, but he also ran the program... ran the program as a volunteer. And serving as his vice chairman, I made myself aware of things, but there were so many things he was doing that I don't think was possible for him to communicate all of it to me, and I know it wasn't possible for me in my role to keep up to him. So now, with Clint having to take a step back to deal with his health, I've had to step in, and in my role as principal of South Middle School, it is extremely difficult for me to, to manage the day-to-day of the Solid Waste Authority and manage the day-to-day of South Middle School. Lynn has done an exceptional job at keeping it, keeping it in a good spot, and we're doing, we're doing well, but the reality is we need some help. So why $84,125? Because our thought process was, in drafting this, if I ask you for six months' worth to clear out the rest of this fiscal year, I'm probably not going to attract a real quality candidate to a position where I want somebody to be for, for more than six months, with no guarantee of funding beyond six months. So I'm asking for more because I want to give someone, I want to get someone who's quality, who can, who can reflect our mission and our vision and execute our mission and our vision, working with Lynn in the office, but I, I don't want someone to look at a six-month, potential six-months position and shy away from it because it's only for six months. I hire people all the time, not all the time, we keep people at South Middle School, but I do have to hire people and I understand the dynamics of hiring and how difficult it is to find quality help. And so I'm looking for more because I want, I want some more time to try to, to try to fund this, to try to fund this situation. The other piece of this, and I do believe you guys are aware, this is coming next week to you, we are in conversation and working with a company called Bursell. Obviously, we wouldn't be having this conversation if the Insorga project didn't go the way it went, they vacated the building, left it full of trash, with the support of Apple Valley Waste and our own, our own efforts, we've been able to salvage the building and we are working with a company to start up operations there again. I can't stand here today and tell you from my conversations with them that those operations are going to start June 2025, June 2026. I can't, I can't give anyone that. I do have a good feeling that they're going to be up and running by the time we get through fiscal year '26, but I'm not, I'm not there yet. And as I understand in my conversations with Mr. Graney last week, there's some conversation coming with you guys and Bursell in the, in the very near future. I'm confident it's going to get off the ground, I'm also confident that with that project up and running, generating revenue, that is lease revenue for us, that I would be able to fund these types of situations without coming in here and begging you guys for help.
Well, of course, Jim, this is your, has been your committee, do you like to start off the conversation? Do you have anything to add?
The other, can I say one more thing? The other, the other piece that I think is important to note is Clint, and I, and I do this, too, I mean, I, I operate with a budget that the county gives me at a school, I'm very responsible with that, I take it very seriously. If you talk to my staff members, I communicate to them that I'm going to take it seriously. Don't ask me for frivolous things, I'm not going to waste the taxpayer money on frivolous things, they're just going to go to the side and not, and be done away with. As I understand from Clint, in our conversations last year, there was some money set aside, emergency funding associated with the fact that Insorga did what they did to us, and we have been responsible in finding grant money and operating differently, and we haven't asked for any of that. So essentially, this is our ask for what was set aside in that budget last year.
Well, that was my point, how much was set aside, do you remember?
Off the top of my head, I don't either.
But obviously, it would just be for this fiscal year, so we probably have to do it in two steps if we did it, finish out this fiscal year, then we start our budget process again, you know, in January, so, for the following fiscal year.
Well, you know, I think that, quite honestly, with Clint's commitment to recycling and solid waste, we've been spoiled. That we've been able to get by a long time without a full-time person because of his desire to do things better, you know, make a cleaner accounting.
Yep.
And his commitment there.
Yeah, he saved us a lot of money.
Yes, he has.
And now...
If I personally recycle, and I went down one day on a weekday, and the facility was open, like it's supposed to be, but it wouldn't have been because Clint took off work at his IRS, opened the facility that day, and he had his orange vest on and he was the reason why it was open that day.
Yeah.
And I said, what are you doing? So, I mean, that's the kind of commitment the guy had, and we have gotten by with a, with a tremendous amount of effort on his part to, as cheaply as we can possibly have.
Last year, or this year, you know, we didn't commit a dime to solid waste, we put some money aside, and put it in the budget, but I can't remember how much we put aside.
I can't either. Clint, I've talked and Clint...
Gary's given me the nod that we're, we're good with the monies that, that we did put in reserve for, for this, so knowing that there are prospects, I mean, other than Apple Valley Waste, who currently I think has, does have a lease on the property.
Yeah.
And they are working through another vendor to come in and take over that operation.
So the company, yeah, the company, the, the Apple Valley Waste lease is, I talked to Darren Grundel on a pretty regular basis, it's, I can promise you this December, I can't make any guarantees because of my board in January, because, you know, there's not anything happening there at this point. We were at a point where we were going to try to make some things happening, there's some permitting things that we're working through with the state. Bursell, in my conversation with Bursell, I think it's important to note, Insorga had a, had an off-take with one revenue stream, it was fuel for cement kilns. And this conversation with Bursell, and as I've looked more at what they do, they're looking at three potential revenue streams. Bursell is, it's Burst the Cell, so they burst the cell of organics, they say generating natural gas for, to sell, and they also generate the cement fuel, and they also, obviously, in your trash have the commodity market with aluminum, steel, all those things that come in with the trash. So that's, for me and my conversations with them, that was, that was a, a good point that they made with me, because in Insorga, you had that one stream, and then when you didn't have, you know, when Argos wasn't taking it, or if somebody wasn't taking it, it was just sat there, sat there, sat there, and things weren't happening. I, I think that's important in the conversation with these guys, they're, they indicated they were meeting, they're, they're meeting with some people in the state, Darren Grundel from Apple Valley has taken the trip to Georgia to watch, to look at this process in their plant in Georgia, they indicated they were coming to see you guys next week.
I think they're on our schedule.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, you've, you've heard the ask.
To me, we'd have to do it in two steps, we could approve it for this year, or can...
You can approve it for this fiscal year.
Just this fiscal, only in my thought, and then, obviously, when we go through the budget process, tell you that we certainly, then, we can't make a motion to spend money the next fiscal year is what I'm saying, so I would so move to provide the money necessary to hire that person for the remaining six months of this fiscal year, with the understanding that we're going to do everything we can to continue to fund it next year as well, so...
So you want that, that remaining balance that I'm asking for today to be in my next presentation for the next budget cycle, correct?
Right.
All right, fair enough.
Fair enough?
Yeah, yeah.
And what would that figure, I assume that'd be a third of your ask.
Yeah, you're looking at $28,000 for the six months and then...
I'd make a motion to add a third of his request for the reiners this fiscal year.
I'll second.
I'll be moving, second, any further discussion?
Now, your motion is one, one-third of it, and then bring it, because I will be here, bring up the remainder.
That won't be part of my motion, but just the understanding with him that we will do what we can to make sure it's funded.
I wanted to make that clear, yeah, for everybody.
My motion is to provide a third of the money, 28, whatever, for the remain, for the last six months of this fiscal year, for them to be able to hire the help they need.
Second.
Very good, can I properly move it, second? No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Lord of Mission interview, Emmylou Schaefer, a candidate for CVB. Good morning, ma'am. Glad to have you this morning. If you would, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you like to serve on the CVB.
Well, y'all need to know this now, when you see the gentleman ad on the screen that's walking through the creek and upset about the garbage being thrown over County. Okay, I thought you were the Emmylou that, Tim?
Yeah.
Is your dad?
It is.
He's on our screen now, yeah.
Yes.
That's her father, that's her father, so...
That is my father, yes.
You have to bring me up for a minute, I got the wrong girl here.
I don't see that look on his face.
I knew her since she was this tall, now she's tall as I am, so...
Yes, very long time.
Yeah.
My name is Emmylou Schaefer, I am currently the general manager at Black Draft Distillery in Martinsburg, and was invited to visit the visitors bureau and sit in for one of their board meetings with their interest in us, someone from our, our company joining the board. Glenn, our owner's availability is not great, so it made more sense with me being the operational person who handles the, the day-to-day of our agritourism business, to be involved in that, I'm very excited at the opportunity to sort of be more involved at a different level. We are, again, we're an agritourism business, we are only open 23 hours a week, so having some involvement in, in what is going on in the county and how we can help and what we can offer as far as feedback is something that I'm happy to, to help with if I can.
Thank you. We'll just, we'll just have a few questions, if you will.
Absolutely.
Mr. Boyd.
Our applications came through blank on here, but what do you hope to bring to the board at CVB? I know you were in the last meeting and you, and you sat in, I was there, and just curious what, what your goals and aspirations are and what you would like to see happen at the CVB?
Sure, so without having a super in-depth knowledge beyond that one meeting as far as what they're actually doing as far as the day-to-day and what they'll, they'll need of me, my hope is to offer a perspective from, from the side of a hospitality industry, of an agritourism industry, something that can offer just sort of a perspective, as a boots-on-the-ground sort of idea of what we're finding to be successful, what we feel like there are, where there are opportunities for growth and involvement, and just sort of to participate in bringing in that, bringing in more folks and to the county for all of the, the great things that we have going on. Sorry.
That's not your fault.
No, that's okay.
Just a little distraction.
That's okay, I wasn't, I, yes, that, that's what you're looking for, sorry. I wasn't super sure what I was, what to expect this morning, I apologize that I'm...
No, it's okay.
No, just, you know, it's, it's relaxed, it's...
I'm good, whatever I can do to help.
All right, Mr. Barnhart, please.
So what's your employment history, other than the...
Sure, so before joining Black Draft, I actually worked for Chris Palmer for about eight years, Palmer Investment Properties, and managed his investment portfolio here in Martinsburg, so I had a working relationship with the city, acted as a property manager for him, providing resources to potential tenants, working with vendors and things like that to, to get folks into high-quality housing within the city of Martinsburg.
Of course, the CVB, as you're probably aware, anything to get tourist money into Berkeley County, and of course, they're funded through us by hotel motel tax.
I did, I did pick that up at the last meeting, yes.
Yeah, so anything that you can do to make Berkeley County look good.
Absolutely.
Fits, I mean, to a T.
Yes, absolutely.
So, you know, go with that.
Absolutely, I think that's very much been a focus of our, since we, Black Draft has been around since 2014, we bought the farm and opened the facility that we have now in, in '22, and I joined the team just before that, that opening. And our, our ideal has always been community over competition, right? More people coming to our area is more people coming to our area. And the, the more cool things and interesting opportunities for folks is, is always going to be better for everyone. So that's certainly something we've done at that level, and I'm interested in bringing that, that same mindset mentality to a different circumstance.
It all hinges on I-81.
Absolutely.
That's, you know, and that is what the CVB does, and they spread it out, you know, everywhere from Pittsburgh to DC, Baltimore to Richmond, you know?
Absolutely.
And, you know, that's kind of, has to be your mindset.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's been an interesting learning experience to see that a lot of the folks that come to visit us, and again, I'm speaking specifically from Black Draft because that's my involvement at this level, at this point, we have people that come from Northern Virginia on a really regular basis to visit us and to sort of step out from what they're familiar with, and that I think speaks a lot to what our area is doing and the things that we're offering to folks who do come into this, this area from places, I mean, my goodness, Loudoun County and Leesburg and that area are jam-packed full of all the, the really great things, and they're still stepping out of that to come see us in this area, and that's, I think that's an excellent example of what so many of the people who are involved are doing in this area.
I-81 brings, I mean, from Ontario, you know, all those areas.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We, we have the opportunity as we're, there's a platform called Harvest Host, and I'm sorry to go off key, I'll bring him back in, where people can stop at different businesses and camp in our parking lot, they basically, you know, sort of just dock in the parking lot, and it's an app, we don't charge them anything, and it's businesses all over, and we get people that are traveling that I-81 corridor in their campers all year, that stop it and spend the night at Black Draft and visit and check in, and it's been really, really interesting and cool, and we have a lot of people that come back, you know, they, they make their way back through on, on the next visits through the area, so it's, it's really neat to, to meet all of the folks that are traveling through.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, sir.
I just, you know, the more people we bring in, obviously, the more hotel money we collect and the more money we have to spend, but for Berkeley County, and i- if you are appointed to this, one of the things that we haven't taken advantage of here in Berkeley County over the years is our Civil War history, and we're doing what we can to promote that and try to establish some actual Civil War battle sites recognized here in Berkeley County and some things, and so I would hope you would take that to the board, and I know HD will if he continues to serve in that capacity.
Absolutely.
Draw people here. We've got so much history here that we don't take advantage of to attract people here, and, you know, like at Berkeley Springs or Shepherdstown, and I, I think we need to do a better job of it, so I've known her since she was that tall, I said, and, and her family, and she would be a quality person, obviously, to serve on, on any board that we chose to, so I don't have any further questions for her.
Emmylou, I know you've said you only had been to one meeting, but have you been able to dive into it enough to see what changes you would perhaps like to bring to the table?
I don't know that I'm in a place that I have enough of a scope of knowledge to offer any feedback on what changes I would make, it seems as if the board, you know, has done this for a minute, they seem to have a pretty good handle on what their, what their goals are. I think from the, from the beginning, my initial interest would be more in offering any support that I can, feedback and, and an opportunity to offer any guidance that I may have from the industry in which I serve. I've familiarized myself with what they're doing, what their, their mission is, as well as their, their bylaws and things, but beyond my limited experience, I wouldn't be willing or able to offer any feedback as far as changes at this point.
And I do think it's important that, that industry have a voice in the CVB and in any other portions of our county as well, so, because it's growing.
Yes, very much.
Yeah. So, Mr. Wood, I know you kind of came at the tail end.
No, it sounds like it, the interview went pretty well for, for what I was able to gather, but I apologize for being late, just had another appointment this morning, had to go to, but anyway, I don't have any questions, but again, I always like to say thank you to the, to the ones that want to kind of give back to the community that, that see how important it is and, and how we can make Berkeley County the tourism and, and the place that people want to travel to.
Absolutely.
I like some of your comments, so...
Thank you, thank you, sir.
You know, her father does a presentation, which I've seen in person, of pre, pre-revolutionary war in Berkeley County, before we were even a county, and he dresses in the old costume, the whole thing, handmade, does that, he actually makes the rifles that they use in, and he makes those and for sale, if you can afford one, I, I could never afford it, he wouldn't tell me how much he charges.
I can't afford one either.
But it's an amazing presentation he does, Berkeley County, back in this area, you know, when the Indians ruled Berkeley, this area, and not, not to settlements and settlers that came in, so it's quite a, quite a long way. You could make him a part of your CVB program, I can tell you that.
He would love it for me to just rope him in, he's been voluntold.
Okay, ma'am, well, thank you for coming in.
Yes, sir.
And like I said, HD, that's his committee, and we'll move at his pace and what we do there, so...
Excellent, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items from the public?
At this moment, we will be going into executive session, so I need a motion.
Sure.
We are in executive session.
For personnel.
For personnel, yes.
Personnel, yes. Yeah, we'll get some.
We are taking it.
As the record show, we are out of executive section and there will be action taken.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to accept the termination for the reasons that were given in the report.
The proper motion?
I second it.
The proper seconding. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Any other items from the public?
No, I did not. I said that, okay, the firefighter, Yonker, we are accepting the recommendation for termination.
Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm ready to recess.
We're in recess.